It is seven o'clock. We will reconvene this regular meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. We've been in closed session under Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code and no action was taken. I welcome you all here to the School Board meeting this evening. As I tell folks every month, we truly appreciate your interest in and your support of the Waco Public Schools. And we couldn't do this without the support of members of the community like all of you, so thank you for joining us this evening. I would also remind you that the Board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or to solve problems of individuals as management is the sole responsibility of the Superintendent and his staff. If you have a cellphone or other electronic device with you, since we have such a large crowd, if you could turn it off or put it on silent at this time, we would appreciate it. Also want to welcome anybody watching at home on Channel 17, and again, thank you all again for your continued support of the Waco Public Schools. At this time, we'd ask that you join us for a moment of silence as we pause for prayer, contemplation, meditation, or reflection. We'll go on to Item 6, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. De Beer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we are pleased to have two students from Bell's Hill Elementary School to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please welcome 3rd grader Audrina Zuniga and 4th grader Andrew Yano. Rebecca Meckel, the principal of Bell's Hill Elementary School, has accompanied the students this evening.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, students. Dr. Nelson and Board members, please join me in front of the dais for tonight's special recognitions. We'll begin the special recognition portion of our meeting tonight with an introduction of our pledge leaders who are both enrolled at Bell's Hill Elementary. Audrina Zuniga is a 3rd grader and says her favorite subject in school is reading. In her spare time, she loves playing baseball and enjoys going to the library. Audrina's teacher says that she loves to help others. When she grows up, Audrina wants to become a teacher herself. Audrina's mother Vanessa De Leon is here tonight. Please stand so we can recognize you and your daughter as well. Andrew Yano is in the 4th grade at Bell's Hill and says that his favorite subject in school is math. He enjoys playing baseball and videos games. Andrew's teacher says that he loves to make people laugh. When he grows up, Andrew wants to be a video game designer. Andrew's parents Maria Anella Yano and Nelson Yano are both here tonight. I'd ask them to stand as well so that we can recognize them and thank them for sharing their son with us. We also want to say thank you to our adopt a school partner Barnes &amp; Noble for donating the books and gift cards that our pledge leaders are receiving tonight. As we are all aware, each year, students, campuses, and school districts are held accountable based on their performance on the State of Texas Assessment of Academic Readiness, or STAR test. We are excited tonight to recognize a group of students who through the STAR test have demonstrated outstanding academic readiness. In fact, their performance was not just standard or exemplary, but in the case of the assessments held this spring, they received perfect scores. This evening, we're recognizing students who are currently in the 4th grade and took the STAR 3rd grade reading and math assessments this past May. Over the next couple of months, we'll be introducing you to additional students in other grades who received perfect scores on the STAR assessments. But as I said tonight, we're excited to start by recognizing eight students who each received a perfect score on the 2017 3rd grade STAR math assessment, and seven students who each received a perfect score on the 2017 3rd grade STAR reading assessment. Beginning with those students with perfect scores on the math test, I'd like to introduce Donna Rio DJ Alexander from South Waco. Joseph Castillo from Cedar Ridge is unable to join us this evening. Juan Contreras from Bell's Hill. Jeremiah De La Rosa McComas from Parkdale. Jason Jarden Alvarez from Dean Highland. Isley Lawson from Hillcrest. Jaywyn Morgan from Dean Highland. And Lily Rose also from Dean Highland. Up next, we have the group of students who received perfect scores on their 3rd grade STAR reading test. And we'll begin with Elizabeth Acevedo from South Waco. Sarah Alvarado from Dean Highland. Clarissa Chavez from Bell's Hill. Natalie Flores from Bell's Hill. Carolina Herada Gaten from Bell's Hill. Karimé Reyes from Crestview. And Alessio Zuniga from Lake Air Montessori. And if you're a parent or a family member of one of these students, I'd also like to ask you to stand at this time so that we can recognize you. Thank you for all that you do to support your child and their education. I want to congratulate these students again on their outstanding academic success. And next, I would like to move to represent our local media reporters for their balanced and accurate approach to sharing our challenges with the public as well as sharing our successes. Tonight, we recognize a select group of journalists that you nominated earlier this year for inclusion on the Texas Association of School Boards Media Honor Roll. This statewide program recognizes these journalists for their efforts to get to know this administration and school board. These are all reporters who have made an effort to visit our schools and have given a high profile to positive news about Waco ISD and public education in general. As I said, I'm pleased to introduce the local members of the 2016-2017 Texas Association of School Boards Media Honor Roll, beginning with Amani Payne from News Channel 6. Keisha Lopez from News 10. Stephanie Escobar from News Channel 25. Taylor Durden from News Channel 25. Ernesto Fraga from Tiempo Newspaper. Shelley Conlon from the Waco Tribune-Herald. And Ken Suri also from the Waco Tribune-Herald and Waco Today. And just briefly, I'd also like to recognize the members of the Media Honor Roll who weren't able to join us tonight. From KCNTV, Jim Heiss, Lisa Hudson, and Andrew Moore. From KWBU, Heart of Texas Public Radio, Joe Riley. From Fox 44, Christina Baurit, Sarah Macias, and Roland Richter. From News 10, Rissa Shaw, John Carroll, Troy Hine, and Mike Lobber. Nestor Montoya, Crystal Rosado, and Erin Zeller. And from News Channel 25, Katie Angelson, Ann Harder, Mackenzie Henderson, and John Elizondo. Again, we are grateful to live in a country that guarantees the freedom of the press, and we appreciate the work that the press does in giving that freedom meaning and in representing what's happening inside our schools to the public as a whole. And that concludes this evening's special recognitions.
Congratulations to all the students and media representatives that were recognized tonight. We'll move on to Item 7, which is, Item 8, which is Audience for Guests. My understanding, no one has signed up this evening, so we will now go to Item 9. I will recess the meeting of the Board of Trustees and call to order a public hearing in accordance with Chapter 19 of the Texas Administrative Code, Section 1.09.1001-F3, to have a public hearing on our school financial management integrity report. Cheryl Davis will give an overview, and then we'll open it up to the public if anyone has any questions or comments. Ms. Davis?
Yes. Tonight, as we do every year, we have to do a presentation on our school first report, which is our financial accountability. Just a little background, the financial accountability system was established in 1999 by the legislature. The first rating occurred in 2000. The goal of financial accountability, just as our instructional accountability, is to achieve improved performance, in this case, in the management of the school district's resources. About three years ago, we had some major changes which were phased in over the last three years, so this is the final year of that phase in. Basically, we assess the quality of the financial management in Texas public schools, and then it measures and reports on the financial resources and how they're used for instructional purposes, and then evaluates the quality of financial management decisions. The annual financial report, I have a copy of that here. You have an electronic copy that was loaded with your agenda, and we also have a copy that's available online through our Financial Transparency page. The TEA requires that the results of the school first be published in this document, as well as an explanation of the district's performance in comparison to the prior year. Then we are also required to have this public hearing and advertise that with two notices in the paper, which we did on September 4th and September 11th. There are 15 indicators, up from the seven that we started with. There are five critical indicators, seven that measure district solvency, and three that measure our financial competence. The critical indicators are yes/no indicators. The other indicators are all worth 10 points, and based on your performance, you'll get from 0 to 10 points on those indicators. The critical indicators, basically, if you don't do this, you fail, and you should. It's basically, did you get your financial report done on time? Do you have any material weaknesses in your financial report? Did you have an unmodified opinion? Was the school district in compliance with our debt obligations? Basically, did we pay our debts, our bonded debt? Did we pay the TRS, the IRS, and all those other government agencies? And did we have a, did we not have, I guess, a deficit net asset fund balance? The solvency indicators, basically, these are just measuring the district's solvency. They look at cash flow, they look at our current liabilities to our current assets, they look at long, which basically measures our sure, whether we can cover short-term debt. We have one that measures whether we can cover our long-term debt. Then we have one that looks to see, did our revenues, general fund revenues, were they greater than our expenditures? And if not, do we have cash to get us through 60 days, which we do. They also look to see if our debt service ratio is sufficient and is our, they look at the administrative cost ratio, one that we'll talk about in a minute. And then, did we have, if we had a decline in student population of more than 15%, it looks at our student-to-staff ratio and what that's doing. The financial competence indicators, first, they look at our data as reported through PMS to make sure that it is reported correctly within 3% of an error factor. We have an error factor of like .00003, very low error factor in that. And then it looks if we have any material non-compliance with any of our grants or state funding rules. And then it looks to see if we had a financial hardship, if we had to have an adjusted repayment schedule, which we have not had to do that. There are certain, in the report, in the back of the report, there are certain required disclosures. First, the contract for the current Superintendent is in there, and then a schedule of any lodging, meals, travel, or reimbursements to the Superintendent and Board. Remember, this report covers the period, September 1 of 2015 through August 31 of 2016. So, the Superintendent's expenditures in this report are Dr. Kane's, as is any outside compensation that was paid to the Superintendent. There's also a schedule of gifts with an aggregate value in excess of $100 that was received by the Superintendent or Board. We don't report any in that category because there were none received. And then a schedule of business transactions between Board members and the district. We have three Board members that report under that schedule. The ratings, as we said, have increased from two back to five. They range from a no rating, if you have annexed another district, really, I guess, from A to F, in this case, no D, from substandard achievement up to superior achievement. If you have substandard achievement, it can result in an accreditation investigation or the assignment of a financial monitor or master to the district. The 2017 Waco ISD results are an A for superior, and this year, we did score 98 out of 100 points. Last year, we had 96, but we did better in one category. We still, the one category that we lose points is our administrative cost ratio. It is better than, a little bit better than it was last year. Last year, it was at 9.84%. This year is at 9.68%. So we only earned the same eight points that we earned last year in this category. And then on the financial competency indicators, we did receive 10 points on all of those. So, as I said, there's a copy of the school first report available on our Financial Transparency page, and I do have some copies available if anybody wants something to put them to sleep at night. I'd be happy to take any questions about the report.
Because it is a public hearing at this time, I will ask whether there are any members of the public who wish to ask any questions or make any comments regarding the school first report. All right. Hearing none, are there any Board members that have any questions, or anybody on the dais that have any questions or comments regarding school first? Dr. Nelson?
First of all, I wanted to be the first to commend Ms. Davis and her outstanding financial management team for their diligence and meticulous time and effort to keeping our finances at such a high level. I did want to ask one question. I know you and I have visited about this, but what would it take for us to receive the extra two points to get a perfect score?
As we talked, in a district this size, we are in that group of districts, from the largest districts in the state, and a lot of times, it's easier for them to keep a lower administrative cost. For a district this size, it's kind of difficult for us to be at that minimum level. I think we would have to get down, I'm going to have to put the glasses on for this one.
So while you're putting your glasses on, I think the point that needs to be emphasized that in order for us to receive a perfect score, which should be expected by this community, we would have to reduce our administrative-to-student ratio.
Yes.
So, I want to be clear about that.
We're at 9.68. We'd have to get down to 8.55%.
It should basically be a reduction of staff.
Yes, by a little over 1%.
Once again, though, thank you for your leadership. I know there are other members of the finance team here. Would you stand, financial management staff, Mr. Cartwright, my homegirl, Ms. Sherry? So thank you very much.
Are there any other questions from the dais? All right, then I will close this public hearing. Ms. Davis, thank you. And we will move on to Item 10, which is our consent agenda. I know I need to pull Item, I've got 10G.
Okay, I thought we were going to do the defending candidate. Everybody agree on who would be our representative?
Yeah, do we have that in there? Do we need to pull 10C, or does it recommend Allen?
And...
They're recommending all there. So 10C is good. It has both of them in there. But I am going to pull 10G because there was a correction to the document that was in the Board packet, and you've got the corrected one in front of you. Anything else we need to pull other than G? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the exception of Item G. Thank you, Larry. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cordewag. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Consent agenda is adopted unanimously. You should have at your place a colored copy of the score sheet that we went through Saturday. The one in the Board packet, some of the headings were wrong at the top, so this one correctly shows our scoring from the first time we did this, which would have been October through the end of the year last year, then our scores the last two quarters, and then the calculation we came up with Saturday. And so, I think we decided the Board needed to approve that scoring matrix, and so I'll entertain a motion to adopt the quarterly progress report.
So move.
Thank you, Ms. Sykes. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cordewag. Any questions, comments, or discussion?
I do have a question, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
So just for our learning, I guess I just want to know, on this meeting, have we spent 50% of the time on student outcomes? So with financial accountability, would that count?
I don't think the financial accountability would.
Recognizing the student perfect scores is...
Would the student perfect scores count towards that, the students we've recognized?
It is recognizing student outcome, so we should be able to count that. Plus, I think that the public meeting is a separate meeting, so I pulled that out.
Oh, good. So, yes, and we spent about two hours on recognizing the perfect scores?
Something like that.
No.
I don't know what watch you're using, but I like it. Any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the quarterly progress report's been adopted. There is one, the corrected one, that everybody needs to sign after the meeting this evening before you get out of here.
Yes. Hand it.
All right, we will move on to discussions and updates. First is Item 11A, discussion update on prevailing wage rates. Dr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, this has been a good opportunity to visit with several trustees about this topic and review several local school districts and how they handle our financial relationship with our local contractors and subcontractors. I believe, to this point, we have been using a Davis Bacon for our rates, and that is perfectly allowable and allowed us to be in full compliance. There is another process that could be used that involves detailed empirical survey work with our local subcontractors from Drywall to HVAC, and there's a list that you get. And so, Mr. Israel Carrera, Assistant Superintendent of Operations, has made the recommendation to complete that survey process. He's visited already with several local districts and will complete that preparation. We'll bring a scope of the work to this Board beginning next month, and then we should be able to finalize our survey hopefully before the end of 2017. So, any comments or questions? I know I've visited with several trustees, but I'll allow them to speak for themselves.
All right. No comments? We'll look forward to getting that report.
Yes, sir.
Later this year. We'll move on to Item 11B, which is tonight's discussion and update on our continuous improvement governance work. Dr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, one of the things we wanted to communicate under this agenda item is we wanted the public to know that the Texas Education Agency today visited Crestview Elementary. Our Assistant Superintendent for School Improvement, Ms. Yolanda Williams, coordinated the visit. Two fine gentlemen from the agency, under the Office of Governance, spent the day, and I was there this morning and participated for about an hour and a half in the conversation. It had our PSP from Dallas, Ms., can't remember her name, Regina, and the instructional specialists and the assistant principals and the principals. And I'm very excited to report there's been a transformation occurring at that campus and a changing of the culture in that school, and we saw evidence of that today. I believe our trustees, several of our trustees, visited with the representatives from TEA. I'll be there again tomorrow at Crestview, continuing that conversation, and the entire conversation was focused on the improvement required status of Crestview Elementary. And so I believe we came up with some good ideas and are on the right track, and so we just wanted to give that update that TEA was in our district today. Any comments or questions before I move forward? The next thing we wanted to report under our governance framework is that this coming month in our workshop, our plans are to have a detailed presentation from our Executive Director of Elementary Curriculum, Mrs. Grace Benson, that really will accomplish two objectives. One is our annual review of our English Language Learners Program. So she'll be provided some information before we, when we post, that is, annual review of how many kids have been exited from the program, how many kids are in the program, just everything you would want to know about English Language Learners. I would encourage our honorable Board, if you have any specific questions that you would like to see Senora Benson address in her presentation, if you'll please forward those to my office, we certainly want to be responsive to that. We also have our final presentation... We also have our final presentation according to our governance outline on career and technical education. So, our national finalist for career and technical administrative of the year, Ms. McKethen, will be making another presentation on the certification opportunities for the future. So, we wanted to give you a little forecast, and really allow the board, if those are interests, if either of those topics, either ELLs or career and technical, you have specific questions, we wanted to allow you the opportunity to forward those to me so that we can prepare a more detailed presentation focused on the student outcomes. So, those are our two upcoming. Lastly, but certainly not least, I wanted to congratulate the Board of Trustees for your outstanding work this last Saturday, and I believe, I can't say for sure, Ms. Conlin, so it's not validated yet, but I believe we're, we're one of the top districts in the state in the Lone Star Governance Work, and we're trying to get on a leaderboard that we currently are not on, but I believe our numbers that we accomplished this Saturday will catch us up to speed and will be one of the leading districts in the state in this area. So, I commend this board for your governance, your leadership, your time, and attention to this matter. That concludes our governance update for this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Nelson. As a housekeeping matter, if we probably need to go back up to the consent agenda for a minute, specifically item 10G. I think the way I called that question, there are actually four components of the item on the consent agenda, not only the quarterly board progress tracker, but also the time use tracker, approve the monitoring reports, and most importantly, to approve the constraint measures that we adopted Saturday. And so, to the extent I, we probably should have taken that whole item up, I, the way I called it, I only emphasized the goal progress measure, so, or tracker. So, can we, I will entertain a motion to adopt items one, two, and four from the administration's recommendation on item 10G.
So, move.
Thank you, Allen. Is there a second?
Sir.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. All right, any questions or comments on the time use tracker, the constraint measures, or the goal progress measures? All right, then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, that's adopted unanimously. We'll move on to the announcements. Dr. Nelson?
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Teke.
Continuous improvement governance work, the scorecard. So, I just had a question about the scorecard. And I'm confused, because I thought, I thought this, what we signed was the scorecard, but that's the time tracker, right?
It's the, it's the quarterly progress report.
All right. Okay. So, so, excuse me, I just, I just wanted to make sure on this student outcomes goal scorecard, the student outcome goal number one, target 55% and actual 55%? Is that right?
Yes, it is right.
And where is that found on our, where, so, did we set, is it, is it the 2017?
Yes, that's your 2017 target. That was the, so, that item was supposed to have been pulled for a different time, and so that is, was an error on our part. The scorecard wasn't actually supposed to be up tonight, so forgive, forgive us for that confusion.
At least that explains why I'm confused.
Yeah, so, that is going to be up for another evening, but to answer your question, yes, each of the annual goals that were set, the, the district did meet.
The progress measure.
The, the first annual goal. So, remember, each goal was up to 2020, and then there was the target for each year, and the target for 2017 for third grade reading scores was met. That's the 55%, 55%.
Although, we started, so, the 54%, is that the 2016?
No, that was your targeted, that was the goal for 2017.
Okay, so, 54, not 55?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so, there's another reason I'm confused, because I thought, why did we set a goal that was just 1%? Okay, so, the scorecard, the target is 54 and the actual is 55, or was the actual 54?
I don't have it in front of me. Does it, what's written in the card?
Right now, it says the target was 55 for goal number one, which is increase the percentage of third grade students reading on grade level, from 54 to 83, and it says our target was 55, but you're saying our target, target was 54?
So...
And the actual's 54?
They were, so, what I, I'm sorry, Ms. Teke, I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, that's okay.
But they, we did meet that.
Do you understand what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so, look at student outcome goal number one on the table. It has target 55, but if you look at goal number one, our goal is that we're going to increase the percent passing from 54 to 83.
Right, so, I do believe that our target was a one-point increase for that first year, and, because that's how it was written in our benchmarks, and so, so that...
We got that late.
Yes.
We got that late, where we had to do it incrementally. And so, we started the first one small, and then we're supposed to make these incremental jumps all the way to 83% by 2020.
So, we set it at 55, because we'd, we already had that, and that was our floor? Is that what we did?
And, for the record, that's one of the, hindsight is 2020, all of our goals were a little, I would say respectfully, a little low.
Low for that first round.
And so, we've got some work to do there, re-establishing our goals.
I don't remember, but I think on the third grade reading, we ended up taking the goals that we had...
Posted in the TRE.
Connection with the TRE.
Yes.
So, we, in the TRE, we said we would be at 55%, and we were already at 54%, but we wanted to be consistent with what we had represented during the TRE, and that's why those, that's where those percentages came from.
That's right. And so, then goal number two, our target was 9%. So, I guess what's missing from the summary that we were given on Saturday, which was very helpful, and just, you know, for me, this is all really confusing, so, it would be helpful if then, could y'all put our annual targets on this document, too?
Yes.
So, then, when we look at this scorecard, it's easy to track?
To transfer, yes. And the scorecard is new, and, and we were debating on the best time to pull it out, and we had just opted not to, because you haven't had all of the goal progress measure reports. So, so, that's why we decided to pull it off, and it just didn't come off of the agenda. But, yes, we, we definitely will align those with all of our documents. This is a brand-new document that's come out of TEA.
Okay, so, I have one more question for Dr. McDermott. So, when you get up and answer questions, do you have a backup timekeeper?
Well, I did write down the time before I stood up, so I can go right back down and fix that, so...
I bet Dr. McClanahan...
I'm sure he stepped right in.
Thank you.
Again, because we're still talking about Lone Star Governance and these outcomes...
This is absolutely part, and, and part of the reason it's on there is because we wanted to make sure that you had the opportunity to discuss this, but we thought it was a little premature, since you haven't seen all the goal progress measures, and it should have come off.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you, Teke, I'll have to make a little clarification, because that was helpful. Any other questions on the Lone Star Governance? Then we will move on to announcements. Is that going to be Mr. Comer?
Thank you, Mr. President. On October 3rd, the Waco ISD Police Department is participating in National Night Out and invites the community to join them at 2015 Alexander Avenue from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. to get to know our fantastic police department. The following week, on the 10th, we'll join the governor in recognizing Texas Education Human Resources Day and the contributions of our Human Resources Department to our campuses and our students. And then I've got to tell you, October is a great month for fine arts in Waco ISD. The 12th through the 14th, in the Lab Theater at Waco High School, you can catch Your Good Man Charlie Brown. The 19th through the 21st, in the Performing Arts Center at University High School, you can catch performances of the Addams Family. And then also, on the 21st, both of our bands will be competing in the region marching band contest at Midway ISD Stadium, so it's a great month for the fine arts as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a band contest this weekend? So, we just need to get the times of our kids performing, so we can check our schedules.
All right. Any other announcements? And then, hearing no objection, we will stand adjourned.